Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate with and count as a tree, we pray for the love of our God, that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Tannerhan.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Sanker.
Here.
All members are present. We have no request to address council on agenda items, so we'll move to the agenda. I want to say two things about the agenda. The first is that when Mr. Bonzal invited all members of council to the Finance Committee meeting to do the review of the Financial Recovery Plan, if we all wanted to take part in that and be part of the discussion, it was theoretically going to be a special meeting of council. Or we could do it out of committee or the whole meeting. But since we were under a timeframe, I can call a special meeting with 24 hours' notice. And so hence, I did call the special meeting tonight. And we will be reviewing the Financial Recovery Plan. The second thing on the agenda is that Mr. Bonzal got an opinion from the Law Department that because cable television access -- after I do this again -- cable television access fees had been placed into Finance Committee, that we could not act on this -- we shouldn't act on this at the special meeting until it was vetted out of Finance Committee meeting. So it is on Finance Committee meeting's agenda and will be discussed. And hopefully, we will have a resolution to that and perhaps it can be placed on the council's agenda for the next time. So for that reason, the only item on the agenda will be a review of the Financial Recovery Plan. Mr. Bonzal and I met with Anna Mary Thomas, the mayor, and Joe Gears, and reviewed a preliminary -- did some preliminary work on the Financial Recovery Plan. And Mr. Bonzal, I will turn it over to you as chairman of the Finance Committee if you want to go through and provide information on the plan which was distributed by you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam President. And I also just want to thank you. And we had a meeting with -- so we had a meeting with Anna Mary Thomas from the Auditor of State's office on Monday, four hours, just reviewing the potential scenarios and just some of the decisions that have to be made when you present, you know, just, I guess, financial numbers. So like, we had the mayor and the Safety Service Director there as well. And so just, you know, they have to give estimates on what do they imagine for police officers or for firefighters or for many, many other things. So I just want to thank everybody for that time. So what we have today, so we've got the Fiscal Recovery Plan. So I posted it on a few of the political Facebook pages, just so some people at home could see it. But it's basically a six-page plan that is a revision to the plan that we originally passed on -- or the previous council originally passed on July 2017. So the bottom line before we really go into details here, if you look on page five, at the very bottom, very right-hand corner, it shows the fund balance deficits at the end of each year. So two lines up, it shows the change in the deficit, or the change, maybe if it's positive or negative that year. And then the last, the very last line, it shows the cumulative, if we're, you know, where general fund balance is going to be. And so in this plan, it's projected at the end of 2022. If we make no other changes besides what's in this plan right here, and we'll talk about some of the assumptions that were made. But it says that we're going to have a $1.2 billion, $2.2 billion general fund deficit at the end of 2022. And so that is not an acceptable -- like, that's not going to be a viable plan. It won't be a plan that we should accept, and it won't be a plan that the Fiscal Recovery Commission is going to accept. So when we go through this today, we're going to talk about just kind of some of the assumptions again that were made here. But then on page six, the very last page, will just be a couple of the items that could be changed, levers that could be pulled that could positively or negatively affect the general fund. And so I'm going to go back to page one then, and we'll just kind of start at that. I do want to invite the president of council to -- she was instrumental at this meeting, and so she kind of knows a little bit about the assumptions as well. But anytime you'd like to jump in, please do. If there's any questions at all, I'd really want to encourage council to engage in those. This is really our plan. And I mean, really, it's the communities' plan. So that's why we wanted to get it posted out there, and that's why I wanted to invite all of council to make sure that we could talk about it together. Okay, so for the revenues, most of the revenues were held constant. The income tax revenue is based on projections that were given from the Treasurers Office. It turned out that in 2017, at least at the beginning of it, we received some -- an income tax receipt that would have -- probably should have been received in 2016. So the beginning of 2017, I don't know if we -- the people that run council before, but it's all year last year, we were just, you know, a little bit higher. And some of that was because we were higher, but some of it was because we had an incidental in that 2017 that caused it to be higher that year. So for 2018 and beyond, it's -- we pretty much held the income tax flat except for a 1% increase. The hotel tax is, you'll see that it jumps up in 2019. It went from $190,000 in 2017, $230,000 in 2018, to $305,000 in 2019, and that's just due to the new residents and hotel. And we still aren't sure exactly how the revenue is going to come in on that, so we were -- it was a little bit conservative there.
And hopefully, quality in in the future.
Yes, we very much hope quality in. Quality in is not baked into this plan, but we would love to amend the plan to add it. So that's for sure. The intergovernmental revenue, you'll see a big jump in 2017.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
But that comment, you said quality in is not in the plan. Is part of the conversation getting an idea of when they might start generating revenue?
I think what we, in order to be conservative, just as the Treasurers Office is conservative, we don't want to put something in here that hasn't happened yet, because we don't know if it's going to happen.
I understand.
If it does break, now, do I know when that's going to happen? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, is part of our discovery, is anybody in the administration or on council already kind of tracking with when do they plan to start generating income?
I had a conversation, I was in the Building Department on another matter.
Okay.
Two or three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago. A gentleman was in there who works for the developer, and he was discussing this with Mark Reeves. I jumped in the conversation and asked. I asked him about the core samples that were being taken out in the parking lot, and he told me that they had indeed been doing core samples, and that's required of any new development, any development on a property that's, you know, currently existing. He expected that those would come back in the next couple, in the next couple of weeks, so hopefully, they will be back by now. And assuming that everything was okay, which they expected them to be, that they would then be able to go out and advertise for financing. So he indicated that it could possibly be before the end of the summer they would begin.
Okay, thank you.
That was just from one person. I have no idea whether that's official or not, but that's what he told me.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, yeah, thanks for the question. So with the intergovernmental revenue, we, like I said, 2017, we had about $430,000. In 2018, we're forecasted to have $726,000. And then in 2019, it goes back to 336,000. And so the reason for the bump in 2018 was just because the Safe Grant money that we received was $390,000 so far. There could be a little bit more, but we're not, we're not sure yet. In 2017, we only received $97,000 in Safe Grant money, so that's why you see the bump in 2018. The rest of the intergovernmental revenues are like estate tax, cigarette tax, liquor and beer taxes, and there's some other local monies that are involved in that as well.
Local government funds, but we don't have any.
Yeah, yes, the local government funds have definitely been cut significantly. So the charges for services, that's basically like our EMS, your police or EMS charges, EMS was the largest in there. The rental vacant property registration, or the vacant property registration, the fees that should be paid, recreation fees. So those are, I mean, basically flat from on out to the plan.
Good question there.
Yes.
You said the vacant property permit fees.
Yes, so the council is an ordinance that requires all vacant property that's not currently being listed or currently being worked on, that it's supposed to be registered with the Building Department. Now, I think the fees escalate as the, you know, as the time that you leave it vacant goes on. So there are some buildings that do, they do register. There's many, though, that they don't register, unfortunately. But that's kind of where those fees go when they do register.
I thought that ordinance read that those funds go into a designated fund.
We can definitely look into that. We can look into that. I mean, currently today, that's where they're going into that.
Okay.
Use licenses and permits, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then, just to mislead, again, the rest of the revenue, we just, they're basically kind of remaining flat as a conservative estimate, because revenues do, they do go up and down, but some will probably go up, some will probably go down. So keeping them flat is the best way to kind of project that. So for expenditures, and, you know, every single department that has health care, this is going to be the biggest item on here. I mentioned it in the email that I sent out earlier today to council, but we had a 25% increase this year in our health care costs. And so last year, when we created, the Fiscal Recovery Plan was created, it was decided not to project an increase. And the Fiscal Recovery Commission was not, they were definitely asked a lot of questions about that, and rightfully so. It makes sense, we should have put an increase in there, but it wasn't in there. So this time, we have the 25% increase for 2018 in there. And for 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022, each year, we've estimated a 15% increase. So in 2019, we've estimated a 15% increase. And then in 2020, we've estimated a 15% increase on that. So, you know, that's almost a 60% increase in health care costs by the time we get to 2022. But considering the unpredictable, you know, how unpredictable health care is, I mean, that's really the best way to do it, considering where we are right now. So when we go through each of these, you'll see, like, and I'll point it out at different times, but you'll see where the cost are going up incrementally, and a lot of that's just because of health care. So if we look at City Council, there's really no personnel change, there's really no changes there in the sense, you've got the same, you know, council members make a set amount, and there's no health care cost involved there. So that's pretty much the same. The clerk of council, you'll see.
I might add, as you're looking, you might see that contractual services is higher. In 2017, that was because of the codification of ordinances that took place. And then each subsequent year out from there, there's $10,500 for maintenance upkeep of codification of ordinances, so that we can make sure that when people are cited to court or when police officers write citations, that the correct numbers are being used. So if you want to know why those numbers are higher.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. The clerk of council, there was an issue in 2017 where we weren't paying the secretary to the clerk of council, at least it wasn't, we weren't paying them completely in the correct key. So contractual services are other things that we have to do, like advertise for our agendas and post new ordinances in the inquiry, and just various services like that, we have to mail out the agendas to people. So TA Brown, who was our secretary to the clerk of council in 2016 and 2017, his pay is not in there, his pay is, came out of the Public Lands and Buildings key. So you will see an increase in clerk of council, just because now we have a secretary to the clerk of council that's considered, you know, a part-time employee, and so her pay will be coming out of that key. Under the mayor, pretty much everything stays the same there, except for just health care cost increases. The secretary to the mayor is split between the mayor's department, you know, the mayor's department, if you will, and then the Safety Service Director's department in our, I guess, financial reports. So for the prisoner's house outside of Norwood, you'll see in 2017, we didn't spend anything in that key. In 2016, we spent 2,400, in 2015, we spent 21,000. So it was just, it was estimated at 4,000 for the life of the plan, so 4,000 in 2018, 1920, and so on.
If there's not enough room down in Hamilton County, right in the center, then they're taking out the Butler County, and we get charged for that.
Okay, so for the law director key, so in the personnel, you're going to see it kind of go down, and then it stays kind of a little bit lower, I guess. So we had a law secretary that was a full-time employee, a permanent employee, and the law secretary left in 2017, so you're going to see a decrease there. They didn't fill that, that position wasn't filled for a while, but then, once it was filled, TA was still, I think, being paid out of the public lands and buildings for a minute. So it's back to where it should be now. So TA's, TA Brown is doing a 35% at the law department, and then he's doing 65% at public lands and buildings, because he's doing IT services for the rest of the city. So I talked with the law director, and he assured me that, yes, 65% of TA's job duties and functions is going to be servicing the greater city. So it'll come out at public lands and buildings, and we'll talk about that later.
Now, does there seem to be any increases here for health insurance costs?
I think that, yeah, but I think the health insurance costs are going to be covered out of public lands and buildings.
Okay.
Because I think that's why it's not increasing there. So that's a good question.
And every personnel key, every personnel services key where there are full-time people, the health insurance increases built in.
Right, but I didn't see it there, which is why.
Yeah, and one thing to note, Tim Gary does not have a health insurance plan with the city, so that's why we didn't include any health care there. Good question, though. Okay, so.
There's also, let's see, a little bit left, a computer for that office?
Yes, yes, so yeah, materials and supplies. So we're going to find it, and actually, in the City Council might have had expenses there too.
I think council did as well.
Yep, so there's going to be some, we're way behind on replacing computers, and a lot of our computers, if we don't replace them, it's going to put the city at a security risk. So in various departments, we'll have a couple of computers being replaced every now and then in the law department. They, they're working on some of those oldest computers in the whole city, and arguably, they are some of the most computer-intensive departments in the city, so it'll be good to get them back on track there.
Some of the programs don't even work on.
Yes, under materials and supplies, yes. Okay. Oh, so we, I skipped over the mayor's clerk of courts. So that one, the only increase is just for health insurance costs. Okay. For the auditor's office, this one as well, the increase is for the cost of health insurance. And then the materials and supplies, there's a, they're going to need an air conditioner, I think, in 2018, so there was, that's built in as well in there. For the treasurer's office, the appointed personnel were left at the rate of the last employee. The open appointed spot was changed from a single family, a single insurance to family insurance, just in case that person has a family insurance, just to cover the highest cost possible. The contractual part of that office is due to the, yes, it's due, there's bank service charges that are in there, in the treasurer's office. So that's where the $60,000 kind of comes from. In that, so in that cost as well, I mean, something the Finance Committee is going to look at is just seeing if there any way that we can reduce our banking fees. So right now, we pay about, looks like about $60,000 a year out of that key. There could be a few other things coming out of that key, it was hard to tell. So anyways, Finance Committee is going to ask about that. We've been told that, I've been, I've been told and I've heard that we've, other cities that are equivalent to us in how much we have in the bank, and size does not pay as much in banking fees, so. But there's a lot of work that goes in switching banks. We've been with the same banks since pretty much the city opened. It was originally at Norwood State Bank or something, but it kept getting bought out by bigger and bigger banks, and now it's US Bank eventually bought that bank out. So we've been with the same group, we've just been kind of traveling with them as they went to their journey from a little Norwood bank to now part of US Bank. So there's a lot of work that happens in there, but we're still going to ask the question just to see, is there any potential for savings that we could possibly get? So in the treasurer's earnings tax department, that one, we've got, the personnel is the, for the union position, and then for our earnings tax commissioner, Chuck Barlow. There is one position that's open at this time, and it's built in at the highest union pay rate that it could be with the family insurance. So there is, the rest of the, let's see here, so then, and then for the contractual services in that key, that key, there's, I guess, some contractual employees that just make a set amount that don't have insurance, but they're just contract employees that are paid out of there. So we just estimated just small increases throughout that. With the civil service department, that is the, so civil service, they, the clerk of council.
... in there for the treasurer's office.
Excellent. For the clerk of council, they do 20 hours a week as the clerk of council, and they do five hours a week as, I guess, secretary to the Civil Service Commission. And so part of that, those funds come out of civil service. There is a, and it, we did, we were not taking, yeah, so the part of them come out there. There's going to be an increase due to, we have testing that's going to have to happen for unions. So we're estimating that right now around $15,000. And then, oh, sorry, there's an extra, there's an extra cost this year, and then going forward, we're just going to keep that cost, just because of the cost of testing. Okay, so with the Safety Service Director's office, there's only increases for salary inside, with the cost of health care. So there's no other actual, there's actual, there's no increase of salaries, only increases with health care cost. Let's see here, the transportation unassigned vehicles, yeah, that just pays for the gas and fuel for the city, and then there's an increase in cost every year in that, just due to inflation for fuel costs. The building department, I mean, the only increases there are health insurance increases with the contractual services key, so that's actually stuff, we get funds in the city for building, like, for fees for plan reviews, and then we end up, we don't have all the expertise at the city, just because it doesn't make sense to hire specific people to do, like, the electrical reviews or to do the, some of the other reviews. So we hire out on a contract basis, experts there. And so we just basically, they did a three-year average on the building, the contractual services, how much we pay out. But all of that's really, almost all of that's based on fees that we get in the city, so when those expenses go up, it's because the revenue in the building department's gone up to pay for them. Okay, so these next two departments, I guess, of course, we have police and fire, those are going to be our, you know, in any city, those will be usually your two biggest departments and the two biggest, you know, cost drivers for the city. For the police administration, the only cost is for the cost of health insurance. The fixed expenses there are for electricity costs. The police crime control, so this is the key that has everybody, so in the police administration, there's the police chief, a secretary, and then there's a secretary that's also shared between the police and fire department, so that's where you kind of get the costs there.
And then there's one data entry clerk.
One data entry, okay.
One full-time data entry clerk.
So that's the chief, two secretaries, and a data.
The chief, police administration is the chief, one data entry, a person who does all the data entering into the computers, and then a secretary that is shared, one half the cost of a secretary. She works in both the police and fire.
Thank you.
So I think there's two, total is two and a half employees that are paid out of the police administration key. Okay, so for the police crime control, that's where everybody else in the police department, except for the auxiliary police, is paid from. So the important thing to know here is that for 2018, we have forecasted for 48 police officers. And so, and that's from a discussion I had today, that seems to be like what is kind of agreed on as well from the police union. They're willing to agree that 48 is a good number for 2018. And so anyways, so, but we forecasted out 48 from 2018, 20, I mean, all the way out. So we've just kept it at 48 for the purposes of the Fiscal Recovery Plan. So right now, I think we're at 43 or 40, it's hard, I'm not exactly, the number changes by the.
Yeah, my notes say that that would be 10 new for the full year, and we were, we are assuming that they all need family health insurance, so that's the highest cost that we would anticipate. And Anna Mary told us that with a new hire, not counting the uniforms that we would purchase, but a new hire with all the benefits, that includes health insurance, P E, or the police and fire pension, all the buyouts and all that stuff, is about $120,500 a year total. That includes benefits and everything.
But not the uniform?
Not the, not the initial uniform.
And can you say that total again?
But it does include the uniform allowance and dental and optical and all that, $120,500.
Thank you.
Why is, why is there the drop between 2018 and 2019 on personal services?
Because we had to pay a 2% bonus because of the arbitrator's ruling.
For this year?
For this year.
Okay.
A one-time 2% bonus.
And it, and there was also severance pay.
Severance pay.
We had to increase it for this year, just because we had some long-term employees that left, and so they had quite a, they had a time bank and things that were up. So, so far this year, we paid $219,000 in severance pay out of the, for the police department. It's been, for the other years, like for 2019, 2021, it's estimated at $250,000. I think, though, for this year, I'll have to double-check, but I think we've added an extra $100,000 this year for, just to account for any future police officers that might leave or retire. So, okay, yeah, so that's the police department, and then the other keys, you'll see for.
There's also principal and interest for the next five years because of the police cruiser that were lease purchases. That's the new amount that's in there under principal and interest.
Yeah, and that, yeah, exactly. We'll also look at like contractual services and materials and supplies. So for there, we had a higher.
James, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you before you go on?
Yeah.
The 17, 18, 19, where we were fixed expenses, there was nothing, and now there's more. That is the half of the radio lease, there were new radios purchased of, between the, with the police and fire department, and that is the leasing of the radios, the new radios.
That's under the crime control, that?
Under fixed expenses.
Okay.
And you'll see that under fire as well.
Okay.
Excellent, yeah, thank you so much. So in the materials and supplies, there's two computers for police crime control, there's two computers that are needed. There's actually going to be some costs, and I'm working with the police chief on how we can reduce these costs, but we'll have to get new computers for our police cruisers. The police, the computers for the entire Hamilton County, for all of the police cruisers, maybe not including Cincinnati, but at least the suburban departments, they're all managed through a central group at Hamilton County. And so whenever they say that we have to, like, that we're going to a new system and that we have to replace it, and whenever, we pretty much have to go, because they'll just turn off the old ones when they're ready. So I'm going to make sure, though, that we, the request was for 13 of these new cruiser computers and two for spares. I'm working to see if we can reduce that. I'm not exactly sure which cars, I mean, I'm sure that, like, detective cars, they might need it as well, but we'll work to see exactly what we need to see if we can reduce that at all, but that's included in this cost here. The police and fire department gave us actually a rundown, and I've given it to Finance Committee, and I'd be happy to send it to any other council members, but they gave us a rundown of like everything that they think they'll need for 2018 when it comes to expenses. Now, I went through, I mean, looking, knowing what the bottom line is going to be, you know, $1.2 million by the end of 2022, you know, I went through it and, you know, tried to reduce a few things there. So we still, though, should probably look at that further for the police department and the fire department, to make sure that everything that we're spending there, like, we absolutely have to spend, just because we, you know, we're going to be getting to the point where, you know, are we going to have to, you know, close certain departments or do certain things to really make this thing balance, and, you know, none of us want to do that. And so we really need to make sure we're looking as hard as we can to ensure that we're keeping it as lean as possible. So anyway, so again, so I'll give you all more details about the contractual services, materials and supplies for both police and fire. I'll send that email this evening about that. The auxiliary police is just, stays, is basically staying the same. There was some decrease because there were some buybacks that were paid in 2017, but, you know, it's essentially staying, staying consistent for the salary. So in the fire department, the fire administration key, there was an issue because the chief was getting paid out of the wrong key. And so this is hap, I think this happened because we have promotions, and these promotions, some of these promotions are happening, you know, various times in the city, and we're not ensuring that the auditor's office, you know, either we're not notifying them or just, it's not, it's not getting changed. So the Finance Committee, we're going to review at least a couple of times a year, just all of the employees, exactly everywhere they are, to make sure that we are paying people out of the right key, especially when there's promotions and stuff. No blame there, it's just, we just got to make sure that we get that right for the future. So for the fire administration, again, the fire chief was not being paid out of the fire administration key for part of 2017. And so we're going to see it, we see a decrease there in 2017, but then we see an increase in 2018, and that's the reason. There's also a half a secretary that's paid out of that key.
As well as the secretary to the Bureau of Fire Safety. So there's two and a half people there as well, same as the police department.
Awesome, thank you for that. The fixed expenses there are for electricity as well, I'm thinking, for the firehouse. So then we look at the actual fire department, so that's where the So then we look at the actual fire department, so that's where the, the bread and butter of the costs are, if you will. So for the personnel services, we're estimating in 2018, the current level of firefighters at 50, so that, $6.94 million is for estimating at 50 firefighters for the entire year. For 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022, we are estimating at the same as the police, at 48 firefighters in each of those years.
For 19 to 22?
Yep, for 19 to 22. You'll still see, it doesn't really go down much in 2019, but that's because we have the 15% health insurance increase, so, but there's 48 for 19 through 22. And again, I'll send you more, I'll send more information to the council about just the different things that are in the contractual services and materials and supplies, I'm going to work with, I've got some questions that, you know, I've, we need to ask to make sure that everything, again, everything in there, we absolutely have to spend, just based on the fiscal projections. So for the EMS fund, so this is an interesting one, because we used to have our own separate fund for EMS that, because the revenue that, we see, we bill people, I guess, for EMS services, and I think that we mainly bill people that don't live in Norwood. If you live in Norwood, I think they, and your insurance won't pay it, I think they write that off, but I'm not for sure about that. But anyways, so with that, though, we get revenue that came in, so we used to put it in a fund, and we would then pay for medical supplies and other things for the, you know, for the EMS vehicles, and just like, for EMS service out of that. But the state has said that we cannot have a separate EMS fund, that that revenue, basically, we have to use the general fund for that, and so, that's why we started at zero in 2015, zero in 2016, and now we're starting to have expenditures there. So those are, like I said, just medical supplies, we're going to need to do some more looking into that as well, just to make sure that everything in there, we absolutely have to have, but we do get some revenue for EMS services, in our charges for services.
These are all the drugs and equipment that are actually on the unit itself, and then the principal and interest for the next five years are for the EMS unit that we purchased.
So, and one item of note here, too, is that for, we have to have, since we run an EMS service, we have to have a director of medicine, or a director of, some kind of a medical person that reviews some of the policies for the EMS service, I've been told. And so, basically, the group that, the doctors' group that runs the Mercy Health ER, the Jewish Hospital ER over on Williams, at Williams and Edwards, they basically, I think, provide that service, that the doctors' group there provides that service, and doesn't charge us for it, from what I've been told. And so, if for some reason that changes, I know that those doctors' groups change sometimes, I know that the auditors pushed, when they do change, because he's a, he used to work for the group, he's pushed to make sure that the new group understands that commitment that was made, but we don't know if that's going to be there forever, so we're not estimating adding any costs there, but just something to note for council that we might have to pick, you know, it could be a $10,000 cost in the future, to pay to have a director of medicine, or director of EMS, if they stop doing that for us. The superintendent of public works, this one just, the personnel's increasing due to health insurance. And in here, too, so there are two people in here, like, we have, we have funds that are allocated here, that are for two part-time seasonal employees, like, to help with the ball fields and other things during the summers. You know, I've talked to Safety Service Director years, and just let him know that we might have to just pull that money out, and not have the seasonal employees, and so, you know, we're going to continue talking to them about it, they might be able to make it work without it, so if so, then we could, there will be some reduction in the personnel cost for.
The only worst, two people that work 16 weeks.
Yeah, it's very small amount, but still, anywhere we can, I mean, we're trying to cut, I mean, anywhere that we can cut stuff and still have the city operating, we're really looking at doing that. So for the city garage, the first, the increases are just for future healthcare costs, the rest of the expenses, oh, the principal and interest is for a vehicle that we're trying to purchase, and there's some issues there, because right now, we're having, the two banks that we've looked at have not wanted to finance those for us, and one of them is US Bank, who is our banking provider now, so we have, you know, $10 million or something, I don't exactly know the exact amount, but millions and millions of dollars in the bank, and we have a $70,000 loan that we need to get from them, and they basically turned us down, even though municipal bonds are like the safest thing in the, you know, out there that you can purchase, it's the very first thing that we pay, and anyways, long story short, it caused some frustration here at the city, so, you know, we've informed, or US Bank has been informed that we are not happy about, at least, it's been informed, the person that told us no on the, the loan, has been informed that we are not happy about that, and so, anyways, more to come there, I'll let people know, but hopefully, we will get that, we're able to get the financing for that, so that we can get the public works vehicle that council's already approved, and that they desperately need. Okay, so for the community center, in 2016 and 2017, the employee that is there now was paid out of the wrong key, and so, you'll see an increase in 2018, just because we have to pay that, we person out of the correct key.
That was another one where she had worked on the water department, and it wasn't translated, it had taken out of a different fund.
Yes, yes, and we're, that will be fixed, so we're going to make sure that those things happen in the future. So the, but, so that actually adds, like, another $50,000, though, in cost to the general fund that we didn't have in our last plan, just because they were being paid out of the water fund at that point. So just something to kind of note there, when we look at why this is, doesn't look as good as it did in July of last year. So for, so the personnel's there, the fixed expenses in that one, again, is just for electricity for the community center. The public lands and buildings, so this is the one where we've got, or TA Brown is now getting, he's going to be getting paid 30, or 65% of his costs are going to come out of there. Oh, I'm sorry, he is a, in 2015, 16, 17, he was a contractor, so there's zero cost for personnel, but in, you know, there's cost there for contractual, instead of paying him as an employee, he was hired as a contractor, and he's paid a federal rate, so he had no health insurance and stuff, it actually came out to a greater savings for the city, to be able to do it that way. So now his costs are going to be moved into personnel, so that's why it starts out at $35,000 there, he's, 65% of his employee cost is coming from here, 35% for the water department. And just this key in general, just pays for just various public lands, I mean, repairs that should be made around the city, city buildings, and other expenses that we kind of have. The fixed expenses, I think, are the electricity expenses for the rest of the buildings that aren't covered by, that don't have keys that have the whole building, so the community center, the police department, fire department. The parks and playgrounds, so this is something I kind of want to really talk about, and talk about the salaries especially. So for personnel services for parks and playgrounds, you know, I know, I've seen people, you know, raise issues about this online, and I've heard about this, but, you know, the reason we have zero, basically, you know, projected out for 2017, 18, 19, 20, 21, et cetera. But as we all know, there's people that work on the parks in the city, so the parks don't just, you know, there's times the grass gets a little high, I guess, but in general, we have people that maintain the parks, and so, there are, some of those employees are either in the street fund or the water fund, and in this plan, we don't have the room to get them back out at this exact moment, even though we need to get them back out, they need to be in their correct key. And it's extremely frustrating to me, because it should, you know, for an account, properly accounting purposes, we need to make sure that this is done correctly, but it's not out at this point. That's going to be one of the goals, you know, in the, in the future, but we're going to still have zero for the personnel key now, and just other public works employees are going to maintain it, maintain the parks.
That's appropriate and okay for the plan?
It is, the, the, well, the auditors of state representatives know about the issue, they know that we're trying, they know that we're trying to fix it, and they, you know, they're not, nobody, they're not forcing us to change it at this point, but it should be something that should very much concern council, and we need to get it fixed for the future. And it was done, and the reason why that was done, too, so back in, you know, 24, whatever year it was done, I don't actually know, but there's six or seven or eight employees that were in the general fund, that were pushed, I think, to other funds, and so, instead of laying those employees off, closing the community center, shutting down the health department, because our union contracts do not let us delay hi, you know, we have, but they're not supposed to be delaying hiring in the police and fire department, we're one of the only cities in the state that have those kind of provisions. So to be forced, so basically, we would have been forced to shut down departments, or, or make those funds. You know, I don't know if it was the right call to make those funds, I mean, I understand exactly, or to make those moves, I understand why they did it, like, you know, thank goodness we still have a health department, thank goodness we still have the community center and the senior center open, but in order for those to happen, those, you know, it was, those moves had to be made. But we're going to get them back, and so, eventually, and I don't know exactly when, but we've got to get this plan under control, but that's a very high priority, is to get that back over there. So for dispatchers, the increases there are in healthcare costs, there's some fluctuation due to, you'll see, like, it goes down one year, it goes up a little bit, but just due to how many employees they have at any one time. Materials and supplies, there's some headphones that they need to, when they're actually communicating, they're on the radio, or with somebody on the phone, the headphones, they have specialized headphones that are wireless, so they don't have to be tethered exactly to a desk, so they have to go and get, like, a book that explains something, that they have to tell the, I guess, procedure, they're not tied to it, and those things, those bad, those things are expiring, so they have to get some new ones, the battery's not lasting very long in them. The health, yeah, and then, so then in health administration key, we're just basically seeing the increases for the future healthcare costs.
I'd like to note, as Mr. Bonso pointed out, about the medical director for the fire department, those, that's being done at no cost, Dr. Correia is acting as both the health commissioner and the medical director for the health department, and has been for a number of years at no cost.
Yep, and one of the things that we, you know, Dawn and I both express at, at various times to the auditors of state, we wanted to figure out a way to, to at least rectify that, but unfortunately, this plan is so tight already, and that we're cutting so much already, that we are not able to fix that at that time, but that is a priority for the city, that we need to definitely evaluate. And there's a chance in the future that if we don't have a full-time, I guess, either medical director or health department, health commissioner, that we could lose some of the state funding that we get for the health department. So we'll have to evaluate at some point, is it worth losing the fun, you know, if that happens, is it worth losing the funds, that we're not paying the salary of a health commissioner, or not? So I'm not sure how much it is, but it'll just be something that we'll look at if we get to that point. So for the health medical services, so there's two more, I guess, health, you have health medical services, and then you've got the health environmental. And so, there were some issues with the way, there was at least an extra, there was employee being paid out of the health and medical, that should have been paid out of health environmental, so you're going to see, in the health environmental, on the next page, that we go from $37,000 to $163,000. That's really kind of rectifying some of the issues with them being paid out of the wrong key.
So the health, health medical services are the two RNs now, and the health environmental is the registered sanitarian and the nuisance inspector, being paid out of proper keys this time.
Yes, yes, and again.
And the only increases are for health insurance.
Yeah, and council will likely, we'll, you know, at this next, at our next regular schedule council meeting, we'll likely refer a few items to the law, to the Law and Ordinance and Human Resources Committee, we've got some policies, you know, coming out of this that we really need to create, to make sure that we get this stuff in order, and we don't have these issues in the future. For, okay, so for the health and medical as well, so there's, we're actually paying an, we have one RN that is, we're getting some funding to the city, I think it goes into a different key, but for her, to be able to be a nurse at SNA, St. Nicholas Academy, and so I think have her salary is kind of paid for that. But because that's not coming, I don't think that's coming into, I haven't been able to find it in the general fund, it might be, but because it's not coming to the general fund, we're really not accounting for her salary, we're, those funds are going to, like, the health department grant fund, so we need to make sure that we're matching, we're either paying that person, have that person out of that fund, or that money comes into the general fund, just because her salary is coming from, from that, and so, it's, you know, it's not a change that, I guess, that was needed to be made in the past, but because we're looking, it's so dire, we're going to be looking at making that change, to make sure that if we get money for somebody's salary, it's coming out of the key, that, coming out of the fund that they're being paid from.
And that's under the health medical?
Yeah, it's under, yeah, health medical, and so, and the revenue will just come in if we do change it, or when we change it, it'll be under the general fund revenue at the very top, but health medical is where we're paying the people out of, and I think Marilyn kind of brought, or council member Hannah Hand, you know, has brought this, kind of up, this issue up before, so. Okay. The recreation department, so some people, well, why do we have a recreation and a parks department? Well, we have those because the parks department really goes, and it's the public works people that maintain it, the recreation department is Jenny Wallace and Tanya that run the pool, they run the rec leagues, and.
And seasonal employees.
Yeah, and the seasonal employees that, you know, go along with that. And so, for the recreation, there are, basically, all of the personnel in there are part-time, so there's no insurance, you know, it would be nice at some point to have a full-time recreation director, and that was something that was talked about, but right now, we're not able to afford to change the plan, or change that, in order to make that happen. So you'll just see kind of costs that are kind of staying there. We'll be talking about it in the finance committee meeting, but we do have, we have to evaluate the recreation department a little bit more, to make sure that they have enough funding in there to purchase the chlorine that they need, and the concessions that they need to actually run the pool, so there's some insufficient fundings that we received, but we'll talk about that at the finance committee meeting. So at this point, we're now into non-departmental expenses, and so, here, we, basically, the first two are the retirees' healthcare, and then the C-9 trust, you know, kind of bundled together there, so there's $500,000 and $400,000 that are forecasted for 2018. We are, because we don't know if there's going to be any changes in that, it's basically just projected out, so $900,000 a year, all the way out through 2022. Just kind of note on that, if we look at, if you look at the last page, and you look at where we talked about, you know, the recovery plan items, and that, we talked about changing the retiree healthcare and the C-9 trust, we didn't estimate any savings there, because we really don't know the exact savings that, that is going to happen, we won't know that until the people register for the new plan. And so, just kind of note that, so if council does make that change, there's not going to be a 900, like, let's just say we do revamp it, there will not be a $900,000 savings there, there will be some smaller amount, you know, like, probably less, definitely less than half of it, so just want to kind of make that clear, and make that, in this plan, we haven't talked about that, but I think that we do have it on our committee, the whole agenda that we'll talk about here in public.
I told you all in January that I would take that on, or last year, I'm not sure, that I would take that on. I have been working on it, I submitted a draft plan to the law department for them to review. I heard loud and clear when people were standing in the room last year, saying, this isn't a plan, this is an ordinance, and so I literally wrote a plan, based upon my booklet that I got from my health plan, that contained everything in the ordinance. It is being reviewed, it's certainly not written and stone, it is a discussion point, and the law department has it under advisement right now.
When they get back to you, the law department, will we bring that to committee of the whole?
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure people hear what the process is.
If you all would like a copy of the draft draft, I'm more than happy to provide that to you, just understand that it's a beginning point, so, and you won't hurt my feelings if you mark it up, it's just that I promised to do it by March, and I fulfilled that promise, so.
Thank you.
And then that, that's dependent upon that being passed by council.
Yeah, and we appreciate that, because it's, it's hard to get somebody to want to take, you know, ownership of that, so I appreciate you doing that. Okay, so.
By the way, you and I are working on that.
All right.
First year, president of council and the clerk of council will be, have goals to play in that, because nobody wanted it, so it's ours.
And you're, you will not be paid any extra, Joe, to help on that, so, we don't have the money, it's right there. Okay, so for the DRETAC, it, that's like a deduction on property tax revenues, you'll see that, like, workers' compensation, I mean, basically, that's just remain the same, just small increases. Really, the item of note here, okay, we'll, we'll talk about settlement of claims, the settlement of claims, we've estimated at zero for 2018 through 2022, it was the auditor, it was, it was a recommendation that we don't plan on spending money there, that that's not really good policy to plan on being, basically have.
We don't plan on being sued.
We don't plan on being sued, yeah, so if there are things that happen out of that, then we'll take care of them at the time, but if you put funds in there, then that can be used against us as well in court, as a reason why, that, hey, you have enough money to pay settlements, so, you know, pay us, and we don't want to put the city in that kind of liability. Outside legal fees, so those are mainly for, so about, it looks like $30,000 of those, maybe a little bit less, are for our labor union lawyers, and so, one thing that we do need to fix on here is that we've got, every two years, I think the auditors of state thought that we, or that their representatives thought that we negotiate contracts every two years, seems like that, because it seems like we're always negotiating, however, it's every three years, so we're going to change that, so that in 2021, there will be a $41,000 charge, and then in 2022, it'll be back to that $11,500 or $12,000 mark. will be a $41,000 charge, and then in 2022, it'll be back to that $11,500 or $12,000 mark. See, the earnings tax initiative refund, so those are basically for, did you have some of those?
Do you want to speak to the real estate?
Yeah, real, oh yes, definitely need to speak to that. So for real estate tax, so you'll see here that, starting in 20, or in 2018, we go from 2017 having $7,000 in real estate taxes that we paid, to 2018 having $142,000. And that's mainly because we didn't, we have some properties that we've acquired, I mean, quite a few properties through various means, like, sometimes people donated them to us, sometimes the land bank gave them to us because we thought we might be able to use them, sometime, I mean, I don't even know all the reasons how we get properties, but it's, we get a lot, we get properties. And so we haven't been able to, okay, so when, normally when you get them, you are supposed to immediately file an exemption as a city, that you don't want to pay the taxes on them. We have not, that did not happen, so all these properties were acquired, were acquired before 2016, and at the time, it did not happen. And so Mr. Moore, our law director, tried to file those exemptions as soon as he took office in 2016, but it was too late. We could not file the exemptions unless we paid off the taxes, but we didn't have the money to pay the taxes off. So we just keep accumulating property taxes, which only 5% of it goes to the city of Norwood, the rest goes to other entities, so, you know, it's not like we're paying taxes to ourselves, unfortunately. Anyways, so there's a $142,000 charge in 2018, and that's to deal with the, all of the property taxes that we owe that don't have to do with the Pay Corps development, so there's some things going on there, but-
Mr. Moore was able to negotiate a settlement to pay that over five years.
Yes, yes, and so that's-
That's what that $10,600 is for the rest of the year out. The balance of that $142,700 is paying everything else off.
Yeah, and so as soon as we do get all these real estate taxes paid off, which will happen pretty much as soon as our appropriations are done, because that way we can stop getting extra increases.
Sell them or do whatever.
Yeah, then, at that point, we'll, and it'll likely, I mean, it's now in the housing committee, but the plan was to, we have an auctioneer in mind that we've talked to, and the plan was just to auction them off, let the highest bidder take the properties. And so we'll keep working with the housing committee, though, to see if we can keep going down that route. The earnings tax refund, and just so we know too, the finance committee was scheduled to start at 6:45. You know, this is, we're going to start that committee, we'll have about a three-to-five minute break, and then we'll start the finance committee once we get done with this and answer all the questions. Earnings tax refund, that's basically for, you know, Pay Corps, CDK Global, and there's a company called iSquareFoot that has the top two floors of Rookwood Exchange, they're now called Construct Connect, they've had an acquisition or something, so the companies that we target for the earnings tax refunds, they're companies that are either, like, extremely high employees and usually high growth. So Pay Corps was a perfect example, I mean, that was one where we made a sacrifice to begin with, and they're now going to double their size eventually, so anyways, we had $1.3 million in 2016 that we paid out there, we're estimating $1.9 million in 2017, a little bit over $2 million in 2018. But basically, though, when those things, when earnings tax goes up, that goes up, when earnings, like, if they don't pay earnings taxes to us, then we don't give them refunds. So really, those increases and decreases are all just tied to the earnings taxes that we get. Insurance just stays the same. Random drug testing, that's just for the, is it just for public works, or is that for police and fire as well, but?
Um, anybody, well, public works has to do it, anybody who has a CDL license in public works, they're subject to quarterly random drug testing, and then if there's an accident, usually police or, there's extra drug testing if there's an accident.
Okay, so a lot of those come out of-
That's contractual, we contract with some peak to do that.
Excellent, so those come out there, and that just kind of, we have a little bit of an increase this year due to some expenses they had to, I guess, get caught up, but it'll be maintained in previous years, next, in the future years. The debt service is, are just bonds that were incurred before, well, bonds that have been incurred that we're just, that way before our current time, so I'm not sure exactly when those started, but we're going to pay those off. Thankfully, debt service is going to be, it'll keep going down, but we have no plans to acquire any new debt in our general fund, so those won't go up. The, okay, yep, so then that brings down, I guess, our total expenditures, and so then we add in, if you see down there, we add in the revenue that, or, you have the total expenditures, there's allowances, excess of revenue over, under expenditures, so you'll see in 2018, we're projected to have $218,000 surplus this year, but that gets applied to the debt that, you know, we ended at the end of last year with, so, you know, you'll kind of see that out. Over time, it goes, you know, like we said, $1.2 million in the hole in our general fund by 2022, so, you know, as of right now, this is not a, you know, this plan is not going to work, we're going to have to do something different, so I'll be looking for feedback from the rest of council. But we'll talk about, let's look at the next page, page six, I know I've referenced it a couple of times, but-
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Quickly, just, just looking ahead to excess revenue, and it kind of carries on to what we're getting ready to talk about, between 2020 and 21, it seems like we're going the correct direction up until then, and then we go from, and then we start making a big dive down into the negative. What happened in, up in the data that caused that to happen?
Yeah, it's a fantastic, it's a good question. So that is where these health insurance increases start to just completely, I guess, envelop us, yeah, they completely, they destroy us, yeah, basically. So, you know, because we start going, we do 15% increase, so I think it's like $2.6 million this year, so 15% increase on that in 2019, a 15% increase on that in 2020, and so, I mean, it just-
That's really mostly health insurance driving that.
Yes, yes, that is what's causing that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So this last page is kind of like, these are almost levers that could be pulled, that could positively or negatively affect the general fund, so I'll just kind of go through each of these. The review of our nine, the 911 dispatch center, that's currently in process, we don't really have an estimate on that. I think at some point, we're going to see, I mean, I don't even have information on it, but, I mean, I think the administration's going to give council, you know-
They've been working on it.
Yes, they've been working, yeah, they're working with the county on ways to utilize our 911 center, hopefully that doesn't, we don't lose our PSAP, we don't lose our, you call 911, you get a Norwood person, you know, you don't get a county person, so that's the goal, but I don't know anything other on that, we'll hear about that later. The review of the retiree healthcare insurance, I guess, view of retiree health insurance, I mean, that's currently in process, we'll be, talked about that. The current employee health insurance, okay, so this is, okay, this line right here, you'll see, there's like $411,000, $474 in 2020. This is for, if we have employees pay 15% of their healthcare costs, what the savings to the city would be. So of course, those are all, that's a negotiated benefit, so we'll have to work with departments to do that, but if we were to, if they were to pay 15% in 2019, it would be a $411,000 savings. The next two are going to be like negative effects if we do them, but they're needed things. So right now, our street fund that we get basically from the state, from like, different gas taxes and other things, we use them, almost all of it for, you know, salt and personnel, and I think they buy some things, but there's very, we're not using it to repave streets, whereas many other communities are using their street funds to actually do street repaving. So if we were to move some of these employees out of these funds, then, and we estimated for the movement of street employees, if we moved two employees out of the street fund every year, you know, by 2022, it would have a $759,000 negative effect on the general fund, but that would be a $759,000 positive effect on the street fund, so-
There's nine employees currently?
I think, yeah.
I think there's two in 18, two in, I mean, if you want to do that, two in 18, two in 19, two in 20, two in 21, and then one in 22. That would account for the nine employees that are currently paid on that one.
Yes, and I, I don't know if some of those might be, like, I didn't realize there were that many employees in the street fund, so some of those could be water, I don't know, but either way, we, there's employees that we could move-
Oh, it could be water, water and street.
I, but either way, there's employees that we could move back to the general fund, which really, and they probably should be there, where we could free up money in our street funds, that's just something to note, that, a lever that could be pulled. Right now, I mean, we just, we can't pull that lever, based on where we're at. The next one, though, is lights, we pay streetlights for the city out of fund, out of funds two and three, which is about $160,000 a year. And so for, I mean, this is one of the, that was flagged almost immediately, that this is not an expense that really should be paid out of the street fund, the streetlights are more of a public safety expense, and so that's $159,000 a year, that's something that we really need to find a way to move back to the general fund, so that we can free up money in those street funds. The, okay, the next two are reduction of fire and police personnel, and again, these are just options, but these are really more just to provide some, a financial, you know, benefit, or financial analysis of if we did that. This is if we reduced three fire personnel and three police personnel from the 48, what the cost would be. So again, these are all just like options that could be pursued, none of these things are, these are not actually in the full plan, these are just items that the city, you know, could look at. So again, it's $309,000 savings in 2019 if we were to have three less firefighters, and $330,000 savings if we had three less police. And just saying too, these are not talking, nobody's talking about layoffs here, the only thing that we'd be talking about is not filling positions that are vacant. And so for the police, I mean, those guys, they're under that right now, I mean, 45 is what we estimate there, but they're at 42 or 43 or 38, I mean, it, yes, so they know what that feels like, it doesn't feel good, we're not, it's not a good option, but it's just something that we have to put in this plan as a potential to make sure that we are accounting for all of the options that we have. So that's basically your fiscal recovery plan, I know I've talked a lot about it, kind of where we want to go from here, I'm definitely, any discussion that we want to have, we definitely want to have that. Next week, so April, or Anna Mary Thomas could not be here tonight, so we asked her to be here, she couldn't. She is going to try to see if she can come to talk to us in a committee of the whole meeting on Monday or Tuesday of next week, and that would be at 6 o'clock.
Or at a council meeting maybe.
Or at a council meeting, I, I think they're going to aim for the more 6 o'clock, because she lives in, near the gate near Columbus area. So we'll get that, the agenda will come out for that, the committee of the whole, if we do that, that will be the plan. We'll probably have a potential to talk about it at the actual council meeting on, next Tuesday, and then we'll probably need to have, if we don't approve it at that council meeting, which I don't imagine we will, I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done, that next week, the third week of March, we'll probably have a special council meeting at that time to fully approve it. And so Mr. Sancker, at the last council meeting, pointed out, the fiscal recovery commission meets on the 27th, which is the same day as our council meeting, they meet that morning, and so we'll need to make sure that, it would be nice to have it approved by that point, so that they can potentially approve it that day, and if they approve it that day, we'll go ahead and approve our appropriations that night, so that we can actually get some of the stuff done that we need to get done in the fiscal recovery plan. So we're going to try to, you know, take care of business here. Another thing to note, this is not the only time that we, we can amend this this year, I mean, it can be amended, you know, as much as it needs to be, but it's, the potential is there, especially if there's some changes with the retiree healthcare, that we'll amend it towards the end of the year. And so just know that, you know, what's set in here is not set in stone. And then the final point I want to make is, just because we put money in here, that, you know, we're thinking, you know, hey, we might spend this much, that's no guarantee that, you know, finance committee or council should or needs to appropriate that, you know, that full amount of dollars. So if we decide that, in a later date, that, hey, maybe we don't need this much money in that key or what have you, we don't have to appropriate that. So this is basically just a plan that shows kind of like worst-case scenario, if we don't really make any more changes than what we're saying we're going to make, is in there. So just keep that in mind, too, that, you know, this is not a guarantee that those funds are going to be appropriated, this is only saying we think this might be what could be appropriated, and so, and we're required to do this just due to the fiscal emergency, so, yeah, just know that. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm willing to yield the floor, and if there's, you know, any additional questions.
Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, I just, we kind of skipped over the last two lines on the last page, and I was just trying to do the math in my head with the numbers above and the numbers that were on those two lines.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they aren't, they don't all add up, so I was just curious, could you explain how the carryovers and then with those final bottom, really like on, on 2018, we've got one million, 250, 2,164, how were those numbers arrived at?
Yeah, I think they should have, I think there's a formula missing here, that the line right above the beginning cash after all plan items, that should be a summary, a sum line, that should give a, a summary of all of those levers that we could pull. But what that's doing is basically, it's adding up all of the levers that we could pull, so the $411,000 savings from health insurance, then it's adding in the extra cost for moving some of those employees back into the general fund where they should, where they should be, then it's re, it's, then it's taking out the reduction in police and fire personnel, and then it's comparing that to what we thought the beginning cash was going to be at that year. So 2019, if you look at the beginning cash on the previous page, again, this is, it is extremely confusing, I do agree with that. So 2018, the beginning cash was going to be $913,000, or, dollars in the negative. And so what this is saying is, if we pull all of those levers, um, yeah, there could be, I'm trying to figure out how she exactly calculated that, but what that should be, beginning cash after all plan items, is saying if we pull all of those levers, what the beginning cash actually is going to be. I, the problem is, though, I think there's, I think she's adding in the 2018 forecasted items that we, so if you look at the street employees and lighting, there's like $300 and something thousand dollars there.
Right.
I think she's adding those costs in, so that's why it's looking even worse.
Right, yeah, it's just confusing.
Oh, I agree, I agree, I will talk with, I'll make sure we get an updated version of this that is more clear, so, I'm sorry.
So you're right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just the two, 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 and one.
Excellent.
Two, 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 two and one.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good catch, because, yeah, it is.
And there's no numbers in there, you're right.
So, yeah, are there any other questions?
Just wanted to make sure that you had a complete understanding on what was going on last year, and we kind of worked it through, because we had to get it done, and just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of what had transpired, and I can't thank Anna Mary enough for, she has this computer that has information on it, it is insane, so they've been worth their weight in gold to come up with some of these numbers.
And it's, I mean, when she, so Anna Mary comes down about once a week, maybe a little bit less than that, but when she comes, she stays, she gets stationed here in the council chambers, and so there's a screen behind us here, and basically, it's looked like she's commanding a spaceship, she's got laptops up, she's got that thing up, and it's, and it's all city financial stuff, so it's pretty impressive stuff, and it's extremely appreciated. Awesome, so, Madam Chair, I don't have any other items for the meeting.
Any questions, any comments? Anybody got a pot of money? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. Do we need to pick another meeting time at this point?
I'm sorry, I can't-
Do we need to pick another meeting time at this point for, between Monday and Tuesday of next week?
We are waiting for Anna Mary to see what her availability is.
Okay, thank you.
So if she can come during the meeting, we'll have her speak during the meeting. My guess is not, she lives up, and she travels to Dayton, and I'm pretty sure she's going to want to do it at an earlier time other than 7:30. So we're waiting on her availability, and once we know that, we will call him, either a special council meeting or probably a committee of the whole meeting, where you can ask specific questions of Anna Mary and maybe put the final touches on it. She can make those changes on her computer when she's here.
Yeah, and she's told me that she'll let me know tomorrow morning when she is available. If for some reason she's not available to meet with us, I'll leave the option to the council president, whether we want to schedule a discussion time during our regular council meeting, which probably not, I think we might just schedule a committee of the whole anyways for that Tuesday and have a discussion. We'll definitely meet as a council again to talk about this, even if the auditors of state cannot be here, we'll meet and make sure. And if you do have any questions for them-
Suggestions?
Or suggestions, yes, that's, suggestions are huge, I mean, please funnel that through myself and the chair, and we definitely love to, I mean, anything that we can do to improve this and make this better and find ways to better serve our citizens, I think it's important.